Schools, colleges, and especially the Interboro School District. And grant to this board and their deliveries since this evening. Spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge. What is undertaken will be done in charity and in peace, and what we do might be for the benefit of others. All this be asked in your name. Amen.
The United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now hear our reports from our student representatives. Mr. Kennedy, your report.
This is a report for the kindergarten academy. Coming up this month, our students will be traveling to Highland Orchards and the John Heinz Environmental Center. The children will be provided seasonal learning experiences for students, chaperones, and teachers. These field trips promote opportunities for children to see, hear, touch, taste, and smell the wonders of earth. They will learn as scientists where they will observe, compare, and record. The knowledge they gain and the experience they have will become a part of future learning in reading, writing, and math. Last week, we introduced our positive behavior support program, where the children were taught behavioral expectations for the cafeteria, hallway, bathroom, and playground. Each expectation is grounded in the kindergarten academy's principles of being respectful, responsible, and safe.
This is Delone's school. That's Delone's school's report. A big thank you to our home and school for organizing a delicious fundraiser, stocks pancakes. They helped raise almost a thousand dollars for our school. Their next big event is Quiz-O-On October 19th. It will certainly be a great time considering Mr. Snyder will be the trivia host. We cannot wait to hear the dunku category questions. September 12th, Delone halls were filled with crazy hairstyles and hats. Students styled their hairs to replicate various dishes of food, their favorite cartoon characters, and many pumpkin patches. We are all very excited for our next spirit day on October 10th, mismatch day. Falls in the air and the trails are packed with Delone students hiking at John Heinz. The fifth graders enjoyed studying the creek water inhabitants on October 3rd. They couldn't wait to get back to the classroom and begin observing living specimens. Eighth grade has had a busy start with the VFW Patriots Pen essay contest. We were notified in early September that two of the Glen Olden freshman alumni are being published in Mission Catastrophe PA, sponsored by Young Writers, and Claire's Cormac fundraiser will begin on October 7th.
Our report for Norwood. Our back-to-school night was held on Thursday, September 12th, and it was a huge success. Many parents came out to see what was happening at Norwood. We would like to thank our wonderful moms and teachers for decorating our sidewalks with positive chalk talk. Friday, September 27th, Norwood School held a Walk for Child and Cancer. Students and staff wore yellow or gold in support of hope for this awful disease. Alex's lemonade stand was run by our life skills classes, coordinated by Mrs. Midona, our school psychologist. Lemonade and soft pretzels and bows were available for purchase. After the students and staff completed the walk, they formed the letters of hope on the backfield in support of child and cancer awareness. Thank you to the home and school staff and students for participating in this event. All donations collected are being donated to fight child and cancer. Six ABC News was also there to support us. Picture Day was also held on Wednesday, October 7th.
Prospect Park School's report. The past several weeks have been very busy here at Prospect Park School. We held our annual open house with tremendous attendance, as hundreds of parents and family members came out to see all the great things that are going on here at Prospect Park School. Parents were also invited to meet with community representatives from several local organizations such as Prospect Park Library and the Boy Scouts. To recognize our students' positive, productive, and proud behavior, students were invited to a reward assembly featuring men to win its style games and earn prizes.
Tinicum's report. Tinicum School has a brand-new playground. On the elementary classroom side of the building, there is a new playground for our younger students. It is not as big as our other playground, but the students are really enjoying it. On September 4th, we had our annual middle school meeting with all the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students and middle school staff members. The students were reminded of the school policies and expectations of them for the year. We have a great middle school and look forward to a successful year. Our back-to-school night on September 24th was a huge success. A new addition to the events this year was a presentation for our parents by CHIP, Pennsylvania's Children Health Insurance Program. The presenter gave information on healthcare for children up to the age of 19, offered by Independence Blue Girls.
This is high school's report. September 10th was back-to-school night, and it was held on September 10th. Many parents were at the high school to meet with their daughter, son and daughter's teachers for this year. We had many boosters and clubs also selling bucks apparel. It was a great night. Thank you all for a wonderful evening. September 23rd, our junior students received their class rings. Best of luck to class of 2021. September 24th, Stephanie J. Parks from the Broadway Play at Hamilton came to visit the high school. She gave a three-hour dancing, singing, acting workshop, and ended the day with a Q and I and a photo session. This was an amazing opportunity for our students and our teachers. This concludes our report.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, Ms. Parks. Moving on to number three, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Tonight, we have with us Karen Confer, who is the education manager for the Delaware County Veterans Memorial Association, and also Pat, our community member. They are here to recognize Stephanie Farmer as she is receiving the Veterans Memorial Freedom Medal of Education. Karen and Pat, if you would like to come up?
Really? So, on November the 14th at 6:00 PM, the Delaware County Veterans Memorial Association will be hosting our sixth annual Freedom Medal Dinner, where we honor five veterans for service to community, and we honor a teacher for their service and work with students about veterans' causes, veterans' ideas, supporting our service people. And this year, we had quite a dilemma, because we received Stephanie Farmer's nomination form, and we were like, do we award her for service to country and volunteerism, or do we recognize her service to her students, which she's so amazing at? And we decided that although you are a veteran, that we felt that honoring your service to education would be so much more special for you, that we chose you as the education recipient this year. So, this is the first year our education recipient is a veteran, and we're, thank you for your service, and you also, I understand, you're a veteran also. So, the dinner is at 6:00 PM at Springfield Country Club. I did bring some extra flyers and some invitations if anyone is interested in attending. And I would like to pass it off to Pat as to why he nominated, and just very special words standing next to me.
All right, Karen. Thank you, Karen. Hello, school board and heard that. So, I'll start mine with a story like I normally do as usual. Fourteen months ago, Stephanie stood right over here where Steph was acknowledged as being the Vice Principal of the Year for Pennsylvania. Well deserved then. So, it was about two years ago, earned that corner to be right around now, the anti-bowling rally, and said, "Pat, I have an idea about the veterans. How about we do this?" So, she sent me off to research it, and granted to Karen, and we talked back and forth, and we said, "Oh, we're going to postpone our plans for a while, but we'll get back together." And then Prospect Park, according to me, ended doing something for the history part of our town, right back to Karen. So, in our conversation about history and the veterans, Karen said, "So, you know any great veterans, Pat?" Stephanie Farmer. So, right away, I said, "I have somebody who is just tremendous." Most of you have heard our stories before, but Stephanie showed up one year at our Boy Cross Cemetery event for the bus four Tinicum kids. Every time the veterans have asked me about essays, and some years, we weren't able to motivate as many kids to write essays, Stephanie dragged our kids out and they wrote essays. We had a reading program for a number of years, a summer reading program, and Tinicum took the championship and trophy four years in a row, as well as the veterans program for our memorial day, five years in a row. So, now, this isn't just Steph, all right? Tinicum School does a tremendous job, administrators, principals, teachers. I'm in awe of Tinicum. As I mentioned fourteen months ago, I'm from Prospect, and I would very like to see Prospect win something someday, but I'm trying to spread the deck, but it's not working, because I'm defeating Stephanie here. So, Steph, congratulations. The award, I just want to read out what this is, is dedication to our country and education, Stephanie Farmer, U.S. Air Force. Steph, congratulations.
Okay, Mr. Phelps, congratulations. We're very proud of you. And a little token, these beautiful flowers, we know you're going to get an award from the Veterans Association, so we wanted to give you those. Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you both. We really appreciate it. Pat, thank you as always.
We'd like to get a picture, I think, of Karen.
Sure.
Can you get in there, Jemar?
Oh, sure.
Where are you going?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Ms. Farmer, from the board. We appreciate everything you do for this district.
Thank you.
Moving on to number four, comments, Mr. Phelps.
And Mr. Doby.
Item number 15.2, which is your settlement, where FOIO number 21 in Glen Olden. So, what is the current assessment, according to what the information that was provided by Mr. Pupio, is $581,000. So, what is your settlement? How you, what kind of settlement did you reach with that?
Mr. Doby, good evening. We reached a settlement above the recommended settlement price by our Fraser, and the settlement price was for a fair market value of 1.150, which is an assessment of $668,150, sir.
There was an article in the paper on Thursday, the 10th of October. Educators in Inverell make the case for pre-K education. And you had the two representatives from the state here. How was that meeting arranged? Because it was in the newspaper. Did you notify the press that they were, that you were going to have this meeting? Or how was that done? Because there was no notification in any of your website about this meeting. And was it open to the public?
It was arranged through PCCY, which is the organization that supports public education and initiatives that they believe in that are important to the education of our students. They contacted the press. They handled all of that. Also, they brought in the representatives. It was the district's responsibility to invite board members who were able to attend, members of the school district, staff, personnel, we had some parents. It was not an advertised meeting to the public. It was by invite.
And you had the two representatives from the state here. Now, earlier this year, you passed resolutions. Did you ever send those resolutions to the state legislature request about the funding for schools?
You do send those off.
And so, since you had them here, did you inquire of them what the status is of your requests for additional funding for education at that meeting?
Yeah, that was strictly about pre-K expansion, Mr. Doby.
Okay. And so, once again, I'm going to raise the issue with the airport agreement, because in the press release by this Kevin Tustin, he quotes Representative Dave DeLoso about nothing is more important than dollars for that we spend on education. So, now, you've reached a settlement with the property owner in Glen Olden, and now you have to go forward and readjust, or go to the township and the county to readjust the tax guarantee payment to reflect accurately the 2013 assessment rate, in which you are losing, again, more than $800,000 a year. You can use that money, you can use that money for a lot of things which go towards education. And I asked that you, my representative, Ms. Fagan, to introduce and to go forward with that and present it, make a presentation, and have the solicitor formulate a plan to present to the township and the county. I mean, just the fact that you're losing all this money and you're making appeals to the courts is significant enough for you to go forward and request that at the township. The township had their workshop meeting last night. I made, again, the appeal to them. Roger Joseph, Mrs. Joseph's husband is a commissioner in Tinicum, and he's read that document in my presence, and they should go forward and told them that they should release that money to adjust the figure, because they're being paid more than $400,000 of overpayment. You're losing millions of dollars of money that could come for children's education, and the only way that you're making it up is to re-tax us. And one final issue. In August of this year, you had an independent contractors between the Interboro School District and Mr. Anthony Castanza, and to perform certain services. So, just, I want to read something about Mr. Castanza. That he was at a meeting that Mr. Anthony Castanza, a teacher at Inverell High School, and ten of his students attended, four of them which were from Tinicum, all of whom are of ISAP. They presented about 25 photographs taken in Tinicum in the area of I-95, in which dredging and Second Street behind Westinghouse, showing the general disarray and trash. Now, I don't know whether Mr. Castanza remembers that issue.
That was a while ago, Mr. Doby, I think.
That's correct. That was in March 11th of 1970. So, I just want to commend Mr. Castanza as an educator for his longevity. That probably happened by, at a time when most of you were not even born. The majority of the people in this room may have not even been born. So, that is a tribute to you, Mr. Castanza, as an educator, and to the Interboro School District for providing an atmosphere in which you would want to stay as an educator. Thanks.
Motion that the five minutes of the regular meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors held on September 8th, 2019 be approved.
Second. Motion has been moved in secret. If there are any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. And next up is our solicitor's report, Mr. Pupio.
Thank you, Mr. President. This month, my firm worked on some general legal matters with the administration, as well as a number of tax assessment appeals and special education matters with Mrs. Don. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Moving on to number seven, Mr. Phelps.
From the Office of Finance, motion 7.1 that the attached treasures report for the month ending September 30th, 2019 be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved in secret. If there are any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Next motion.
Motion 7.2 that fund dispersments in the amount of $7,409,246 be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved in secret. If there are any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Is there any course comments, Mr. Phelps?
No, sir.
Okay. We're going to bring in a committee of course. Nine point one, Mr. Shabon.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Finance committee met on Monday, October 7th at 7:00 PM. All the agenda items were information only. First, the board was to write the PDE adjusted index for budgetary purposes. PDE set Inverell's index at 3.5%. This means that the school board cannot raise taxes higher than 3.5% without submitting information to the state. Historically, Interboro School District comes in under the adjusted index, but we do use this number for preliminary figures. The next item on the agenda was the budget timeline. Mr. High School provided all of the deadlines the board needs to meet to submit the budget to the state. Due to 2020 being an election year, some of the dates have been pushed earlier. Ms. High School also shared the independent audit timeline. They are currently completing fieldwork. We will have the audit committee meeting in December to review the audit with a final vote at the December meeting. Ms. Verkio, Mr. Harris, and myself showed interest of being on the audit committee. Finally, all board members have the opportunity to ask questions about the preliminary financial statements. Our next finance meeting will be held Monday, November 4th at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Shabon. Moving on to 9.2, GBO, Mr. Goldsberg.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. On Monday, October 7th, we had a GBO meeting. At that GBO meeting, Mrs. Riley gave us an update on registration within the district as of October 2nd. We got numbers for the kindergarten academy. Last year, there were 231 students enrolled. This year, we have 271. And if I'm correct, does that include the pre-K also?
I don't believe it does.
Okay, so, that's an enrollment increase of about 40 students. Inverell High School, last year, we had 1,083. This year, we have 1,061. In Norwood School, we have 537, which is one additional student as opposed to last year. Glen Olden School, enrollment went down by 13 students, 14 students, and is currently at 611 students in total. Prospect Park has stayed the same at 557 students, and Tinicum School with 341 students, which is up about 18 students from last year. And that was the update provided by Mrs. Riley. Along with that, we, Mr. Galloway also gave us an energy savings update as to what has happened in the past year financially in terms of our energy usage, and how, because we're such a large energy user, how we've been able to purchase energy and using setbacks, getting better pricing. What that ends up in total is that from last year to, I'm sorry, from, let me see, from 2018, 2019 compared to 2019, 2020, it looks like we will be saving approximately $52,319, and in natural gas savings of $26,619. In energy, electric energy cost savings, that's about a 13, a little bit more than 13% decrease. And we're able to purchase our, with distribution and generation of electricity, we're able to purchase at 7.65 cents per kilowatt hour. Now, I know I purchase my electricity at 13.5 cents per kilowatt hour, so that's not quite half, but that's quite a good price that we're able to get that at. And also, the fact that we've been able to use the setbacks for, and finding out about how those schools respond to those setbacks, we've greatly been able to save energy, energy costs, which is a big expense within the district. So, that was the update that Mr. Galloway provided. And then, we had some comments about the new food service that we are, that we are now using within the schools, and the feedback has been very positive. I even asked my daughter how she likes the new food, who was at Norwood, and she likes it, so, very good. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Goldsberg. Moving on to 9.3 legislative, Ms. Verkio.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. The legislative meeting that was scheduled for last Wednesday, October 9th, was canceled due to the Jewish holiday, Yom Kippur. But there is one item that I am aware of that I can report on, and that is Senate Bill 473, which is Tobacco 21 Smoking Provisions, which is amending Title 18, which is Crimes and Offenses, and Title 53, Municipality Generally, which is repealing provisions related to the corruption of minors, repealing and expanding the definition of tobacco products to include smokeless tobacco productions, and raising the age that minors may purchase tobacco products from 18 to 21, and further prohibiting the use of tobacco and tobacco-related use in schools. This Senate bill was amended and it passed by the Senate 43 to 6 on September 25th. So, this bill that was passed on the 25th coincides with what Interboro School District, their policy last month, on September 18th, they updated their policy, also prohibiting the possession, use, and sale of any tobacco and nicotine, nicotine products on any Interboro School District property or owned property by the district. So, that's all I have for that. The next legislative council meeting is Wednesday, November 13th, and hopefully we'll have some reporting updates that will impact our district on the charter school reform and public school fund. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Verkio. Moving on to 9.4, Delaware County Community College, Mr. Phelps, we're back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Nothing to report, because we haven't had a meeting since, I do believe it was April, but our next meeting is scheduled for October 30th, which is a dinner that all, or all the school board members and the superintendent has invited to.
Thank you, Mr. Goldsberg. 9.5, Delaware County Intervene, Mr. Harris.
Good evening, everyone. Over here. Way in the corner here. The Delaware County Intervene Unit met on October 2nd, 2019, contract with Wilson Language Training Corporation to provide three days of professional development. We also had a renewal agreement with Wonder Works, submitted an early Head Start, Head Start grant application, permission for 30 students and four advisories, advisors to attend the Skills USA Leadership Conference. We also had permission for four adults and 40 students to attend the Greater New York Dental Conference, permission for two adults and 32 students to attend the teen gas open house in Newcastle, Delaware, clinical agreement with the DCTS Energy Emergency and Protective Services Program, and Keystone Quality Transportation of Norwood Fire Company and Ambulance Company, contracts with Delaware County Community College to provide dual enrollment for the automotive technology program. For more news and happening, go to DCIU.org. Our next meeting will be scheduled November 6th at the Morton Education Center. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. We want to see the best for last, Ms. Verkio.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. October is a slow month, so the only thing I can at least say is that, to reiterate, we have the October 31st deadline for the scholarship competitions, the Voice of Democracy and the Patriot Pen. I know we have several essays, a ton of essays that are already being worked on, that I will be collecting. I know we have a few candidates for Teacher of the Year that have already been submitted to the VFW that we will be choosing a winner, and that I look forward to reading all the essays and going through and picking winners from each of the schools, and we'll be going through and submitting the winners to the board shortly.
We'll recognize them. We will recognize them here at a meeting, too. We will recognize them here at a meeting, too.
There we go.
Thank you, Ms. Alonzo. Okay, moving on to, um, Mr. King and, uh, Mr. Jester, or, Miss Park, you just can wait, excuse your, uh, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to number ten, Mr. Rob.
Well, now, with the personnel, motion that bond personnel actions be approved, starting with ten point one on page two, and going into ten point one three on page six.
Second. Motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next one, Mr. Rob.
Uh, motion with regret that the bond retirement be accepted. Eleven point one, Diana Hill has passed, database coordinator at the Administration Building, with nine years of service to the district, be approved for retirement, expected November ninth, twenty twenty.
Second. Motion has been moved in seconded.
Is that a, is a...
That is correct. Yep. She's giving us plenty of time.
Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Motion has been moved in seconded. We had our one question. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed. The motion carries nine zero. Next up, Mr. Rob.
From the Office of Curriculum and Instruction, motion that the following items be approved, twelve point one to twelve point ten, ending on page eight.
Second. Motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next one, Mr. Rob.
From the Office of Special Education, People's Services, motion that the following items be approved, thirteen point one to thirteen point eight, ending on page nine.
Second. Motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Rob.
From the Office of Facilities, uh, motion that the following items be approved, fourteen point one and fourteen point two.
Second. Motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Rob.
From the Office of Finance, motion that the following items be approved, fifteen point one to fifteen point three.
Second. Motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Rob.
Motion sixteen, that the Board of School Directors approve the second readings of the bond policies in category of property. Seven two point one, crowd funding. Seven one eight, service animals in the school. Seven eight one eight dot one, urban dogs.
Second. Motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Uh, do we have any old business? Hearing none, you will hear from our superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Uh, on Monday, October ninth, the twenty nineteen recipients who are inducted into the Interboro Hall of Fame. New inductees include Christopher Beal, class of nineteen seventy-nine, Paul Kerrigan, Interboro class of nineteen seventy-five, community member Theodore Dorothy Robinson, and Jack Lethowitz, former Interboro staff member. Each of these honorees or family representatives share their professional and personal success stories, and how being a part of the Interboro School District played a significant role in their accomplishments. I highly recommend that our parents, students, and staff take a few minutes to visit the community page of our website and read more about these honorees and all of the Hall of Fame recipients. I would like to thank the Interboro Alumni Association and Hall of Fame Committee for the time they have dedicated to supporting the district and continuing the Hall of Fame tradition. Uh, today, we held our, the high school held its first annual senior conference day. Jen O'Mara, Interboro alum and PA House Representative for the hundred and sixty-fifth district, legislative district, was our keynote speaker. All of our seniors attended three sessions of their choice, which included financial literacy, health and dating, healthy relationships, college life, mock interviews, resumes, and cover letters, among others. We also had over twenty business, military, and union, union organizations onsite to discuss potential career opportunities. On behalf of the district, I would like to thank everyone that assisted in the planning and making this day a very worthwhile opportunity for our seniors. For the first time through, it really was a great success, and this is something that we are definitely going to continue. Also, we're very proud to announce that the Interboro School District is having a district-wide four-to-eighth grade theater program for the twenty nineteen, twenty school year. Details regarding the program, rehearsals, and transportation are being emailed to parents via Blackboard. Paper copies can also be picked up in the main office of each of our community schools. We need students to sign up by October eighteenth. Under the direction of Ms. Rosemary Haley, who teaches at Norwood School, and Assistant Director Anne Rosen from Glen Olden School, rehearsals will be held at Norwood beginning on October twenty-fourth. The program invites all of our students in grades, grades four to eight to participate and learn about a variety of aspects of the theater on Tuesdays and Thursdays from three thirty to five. We are also providing transportation from our community schools. As a culminating activity, students will perform a musical at an evening performance on Friday, May fifteenth, twenty twenty, and a matinee performance on Saturday, May sixteenth, twenty twenty. This will be a rewarding opportunity for students, and we are really looking forward to expanding our theater, uh, our theater opportunities for our students. Um, and more information to come as we get closer to the performances. So I hope that we will see a lot of students, um, participate in this. We ran some theater camps this summer for the students. They were very successful. Uh, and this is also at the beginning of a nice theater program into our high school program, which we've had great success with under the direction of Ms. Knapp. So we're looking forward to, um, getting this started. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rob.
I do have one. I'm sorry. I have one other thing. I'm sorry, I would also like to, um, welcome Rob Sonnet. I'm not sure if anyone saw, um, it was part of the, um, personnel motions, but I'd like to welcome Rob Sonnet as our new Acting Director of Technology here for the district. Rob has been with us for a very long time. He is not here this evening. He did have a prior commitment, um, but he has worked here at Interboro for ten years. Um, and we are very excited to have him on board in this leadership position, and, uh, I know he's going to be in, continue and do an excellent job in this new role. So I just wanted to recognize him.
No problem, Ms. Rob. Thank you. Um, do we have any comments from the board members? Hearing none, myself, I would just, uh, I would like to thank Mr. Galloway for the job that he's accomplished in this district since he came on as our facilities guy. Um, he's not just saving his money in utilities, uh, by turning the air on when he leaves, or the heat, for that matter, but, uh, the supplies that the district needs, he makes an effort to make sure we're getting the best prices, which I know for a fact. He, uh, he also, uh, the amount of work that we are getting him done in-house since he has came on with us, the amount of money that he has saved in this district, I just want to say thank you, Mr. Galloway. You're doing a very good job, sir. Very good. Okay, um, on Monday, November fourth, two thousand nineteen, the Finance Committee meeting, or the GBO meeting immediately following, will be held at the seven, at seven P.M. in the boardroom of the Administration Building. The next work session of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be convened in the boardroom of the Administration Building on Monday, November eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, at seven P.M. The next regularly monthly public meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be convened in the boardroom of the Administration Building on Wednesday, November twentieth, two thousand nineteen, at seven P.M. Meeting adjourned.